It's like your map is not industry standard. You just wanted to open us up to frickin lawsuit. How about it deviates from what's normal?
Yeah.
All right, everybody. Go ahead and get started. It is five o'clock and we've got two items on the agenda and there might be some lengthy discussions. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the city council conference for Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. The first item on the agenda is a presentation and discussion on the RDG Main Street Campus Master Plan and a request from LeMond International School currently located on the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Property. And I think we have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Well, it's good to be, um, good to be here with you. Um, it's, it's been a couple of months, but, um, but, but good to be back. I would say that this is not exactly a master plan. It is, it is almost more, more of a prospectus. It's a set of ideas and principles and patterns that may or may not have any resemblance to what eventually happens on the campus. But it, but it's a way, it's an exercise of looking at some possibilities and illustrating ideas and, and seeing what makes, what makes sense and hopefully can be used as a tool to move the, the ultimate future of, of the Griffin Hospital site forward. So why is this, why is this site important? I want to elaborate a little bit on some of these things, but, but one that's very important is that it really has the chance to be a, a bridge between the east and west sides of town. One thing that, uh, that those of us who worked on A Norman were surprised at, at the very first meeting was that there really is a geographic split. And then seeing the way that the city works and the, and, and the, um, layout of, of various things, it, it, we, we can understand why that's, why that's the case. This site has a really unique opportunity to help to bridge that gap. The schemes that some of you have already seen, at least in, in, in earlier forms, um, can accommodate a pretty large amount or a reasonable amount of the, um, of the growth that Norman will experience over the, the next 20 years. It's an opportunity to develop at urban density. Uh, we can, we, we've got some freedom here to think about different housing forms, at least in concept. And some of those forms are, uh, speak to the need of affordability, to, um, to, uh, smaller lots, to, to multifamily development. And, um, and, and frankly, a place that people can move to and not necessarily be in the university environment, which, which is a great thing, but, um, but, but it's, 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 it's a little different from that. Uh, it reinforce, it's, it's important in terms of reinforcing core Norman. It reduces the pressure to, uh, try to create density on historic neighborhoods around it, uh, which, which, which I think is actually a significant thing as well. And there are a variety of other community goals that it can meet. For example, the arts community in Norman has really had their eyes on the chapel for a number of years. And that is, um, we, we don't know what the building is like inside or whether that's doable, but it's something that, that, um, is, is a part of all of these concepts. We, um, there are people have different views of this site, but, but I actually see it as being a site that is, um, a very good one, uh, in, in, in a lot of ways. As you can see on the left, there are a lot of assets around it. Um, the community park, uh, Sutton Preserve, uh, the, uh, convenience of a Walmart and, and other commercial around it, the proximity to downtown, uh, all of which make this, um, an interesting site for development and, um, and a lot better than other big sites that I've seen in other, in other places. Uh, it has a lot of, um, interior features as well that range from the sunken area that we talked about earlier, uh, to the streams and, um, and, and green corridors, um, to historic buildings that, um, that, again, we don't know exactly what their condition is, but, but are resources to, um, to work with. So, um, just in terms of approaching it from a diagrammatic point of view, it's a very interesting place to, um, to look at. So as we, um, thought about the, uh, site and about its various features and characteristics and so forth, we, uh, were guided, not necessarily writing them all down, but guided by some, some basic principles. One is that, uh, this has to be a site that's something different, that's, uh, that, that is iconic, that has special features that, that maybe don't exist anywhere else in, in, in Norman. I mentioned, and we're going to look at a diagram of this in a minute, the, the, the interesting possibility of being an east-west bridge. Um, we were trying as a target to accommodate somewhere between five and eight percent of the 20 to 25 year housing demand. Um, that means that if you thought about this being a 10-year or 15-year build out, that it would, it would be about 10 to 15% of the total production, um, of, of the city during that period, which is quite a bit. Uh, that it should provide a great neighborhood experience and it respond, should respond to, to people's preferences and needs. Not everybody wants to live in five-story buildings. Um, there's, there, there are a variety of different things that happen at different stages in people's, um, life, although we'd say probably the largest mo, the largest markets for this are going to be, um, younger households, uh, singles, empty nesters, uh, people in those ranges and not necessarily families with a lot of kids who are going to need big yards. That's, that's, we're, we're at a higher density than that. Although there are people who like that density too. Um, that, that it should connect to the surroundings, that it should, it should not be a, of, an enclave, but it should, it should relate to surrounding neighborhoods. Um, it should be part of a community greenway that includes the soccer fields and, and the, um, and Sutton Preserve. Uh, it should respect history, it should manage stormwater, which is a significant issue here. Um, it should complement both of the commercial districts on either end of it, 12th Avenue Northeast and Downtown, and it should provide, if at all possible, a home for the arts. So I just wanted to quickly focus in on one of those. And, um, and the, the central big public areas, Sutton Preserve, um, the soccer fields and the state property are, are great resources, but they're also a bit of a wall. And, um, and, and they do, um, in, in a certain way, because they're hard to get across, they do create something of a, of, of a geographic barrier. So that makes this site in redevelopment, very important one to look at for making those kinds of connections. And you can see that in a way, the way that neighborhoods are structured, there's a natural, um, convergence on, on, on the Griffin side as well. So really excited about, about how this site can work, uh, as a, as a unifying influence. Uh, we've talked earlier, um, about the, the residential building block, about using small lots as a way of both building density and providing an accommodation for a lot of different kinds of, of housing and a lot of individual preferences from single-family detached to attached to, to, um, to townhomes. Um, we went through five different, um, concepts for it. Again, uh, many of you, um, have, have seen these, although probably none of you have seen number five because it was an attempt to take everybody's ideas and pull them all together into, um, into one, uh, to, um, use a phrase that's in parlance right now, one big beautiful plan. I'm not sure that that's necessarily what it is, but, um, but, but there it is. And we, um, so we, we chose, um, options three and five as, as being probably the two that represent different, somewhat different approaches to the site that are, um, that are really refinements of some of the other ideas in the, um, in, in the earlier documents. These accommodate, depending upon which option we, 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 we looked at, somewhere between 1,300 and 1,800 housing units. Um, so that, that is hitting right in our five to six percent to eight percent, uh, proportion of, of, of total, uh, total development. I commented 18 specific kinds of features that are included in different, um, in, in different combinations in, um, in these plans, um, some of which will stick. Sometimes they're, they, they appear in one and not, not another, but they're all interesting ideas, some of which we've been involved in designing. Others are in my collection of photographs that, um, that, uh, you, you, you go to and take a look at when you, when you visit. Um, I'm lucky enough to have two kids and four grandchildren in Los Angeles, and every time I go there, I see something new and something different that, um, that, that you can use. So here are views, uh, that we've developed of, of concepts three and, and five. Um, so, uh, so at, um, just to go clockwise in this one from the, uh, from the upper left clockwise is, uh, taking an aerial view as if you were standing at the roundabout and looking up a central mall that, uh, that is the organizing, uh, uh, influence of this, of this particular concept. So we do think, and, and wrote about this in the, in the paper, that the Main Street access and continuing that feature is very, very important, whether it's a canal or something else, who knows? But, but, but that, um, that processional, uh, connection is, is, is really, is really a key element. And that's what you see, um, in, in that, um, in that drawing. Um, on the upper right, uh, we're looking the other direction toward, um, the, uh, center, uh, that includes the, um, uh, the chapel, uh, some of the residential neighborhoods, the, uh, and, and looking then toward, toward the promenade. Um, in the, uh, lower right, uh, looking at through one of the residential streets toward, uh, in the other direction toward the, the roundabout with the detention basin, uh, behind. And then, uh, on the left, the, um, the idea of the square that would be off the, off the promenade, which is in the foreground, uh, with primary commercial and mixed-use type of, of development, um, a, around that. So, uh, uh, a, um, I, I think a concept that's kind of appealing and orderly from a graphic point of view, although that doesn't necessarily mean much. Concept five is a little messier than that, um, but that's okay too. So in concept five, um, there's a little bit of a different arrangement of things. First of all, the, the, the big difference here is that, um, most of the multifamily is lower scale, three-story walk-ups as opposed to, um, more expensive, higher buildings that require parking structures. So this concept is entirely surface parked and it's entirely, uh, lower-rise, lower-scale, uh, units, but, uh, but in, but in an urban framework. So from the, um, from the, uh, upper left here, uh, same concept of a central feature, but in this case, uh, it's not water, but it's, but it's, it's more of a mall and more of a, of, of, of a, of a ground area. You can see what that would look like on the left in, in, this is in Pride of this in Los Angeles, it's a very similar, uh, idea. In the right, sort of a, uh, a Wheeler scaled, um, mixed-use work-live-sell kind of, um, kind of environment. Here we're looking, uh, from, uh, a, uh, a, a detention, uh, retention area along Bishop Creek, uh, up, up the, up toward the, um, toward, toward the north, toward Robinson Street. In the lower right, again, a residential street. And then, um, and then looking in the opposite direction from the sunken area, uh, which, which, uh, as you remember, we, we use as sort of semi-private neighborhood park, uh, where kids can set up a volunteer wiffle ball, diamond and so forth and so on, uh, something that occurs about five blocks from my house. And, uh, looking toward the, um, toward the chapel, an arts district, and then beyond that to what could or maybe won't be a, uh, production studio. It's kind of a separate unit from everything else, so, um, so maintenance of the existing school or anything like that is, is, does, is, does not violate this, this concept at all. So, um, finally, last slide will be implementation steps. So we've laid out a, um, a strategy for, um, for how to, how to get this done, um, starting out with establishing a partnership between the state and the city. Um, hopefully this will be a tool toward, um, moving toward that. Uh, secondly, this is a project that's a major community project, so local support's going to be rather, rather critical. Uh, three is, um, the conveyance of the site, if, if it, if it goes that way from, from, uh, state or one jurisdiction to another. Four is identifying the development entity, and there are a couple of ways to go. Um, one is through a, um, a local nonprofit development corporation, a special corporation that's established solely to do this project. Another is to advertise for master developers or, or some combination of the two. So a project like Miller in Austin was done by master developer. So the city acquired, uh, the old, uh, when I lived in Austin Mueller Airport, it wasn't called Miller at the time, um, and, um, advertised, uh, they owned the, the airport, advertised proposals, uh, selected a developer, and that developer was the master who, who then put the rest of the project together. Step five is to develop a master plan. Step six is the financing plan. Uh, it's almost inevitable that a project like this is going to use tax increment financing. Um, and there's, there's a, a very, very preliminary, uh, calculation of what that might support in the, um, in the document. Finally, number seven is the entitlements, uh, the, the development standards and so forth, the agreements on responsibilities, uh, none of which will be easy, but all of which have precedence in terms of how they get put together. And finally, uh, an idea for a phasing strategy. So, um, just a couple of concepts for the two that it's a great idea to, number one, make a first phase where it's going to have the greatest degree of success. Um, that means close to other anchors, um, and have an amenity that gets people work, living and, and, and working there in the first place. Moving on, uh, toward, uh, uh, the other parts of the site in some order so that you're building on strength to strength to strength to strength. A very important thing, um, and I've seen projects that really came to grief and, and were slow to start, is by not building a critical mass. There's got to be enough to be able to build a community that gives people a sense of security, that they're not isolated and, and alone. And so that's my, uh, that's my, uh, quick, quick presentation. And so any questions you might have, I welcome.
Anybody have any to start with on council? Okay. Councilor Pico?
Not really questions, just comments.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if it, if it was my preference, I think I'm leaning towards concept three. Uh, and really it's just because of the, the strength of the street grid you have in there, it just really orders it and delineates kind of the, the pedestrian, the traffic flows and all that. I really like the, the corner connection in the northeast of the site. I think it's a nice, nice element. Like the pedestrian bridge to cross over Robinson to the soccer complex. Um, I think the only thing that I'd really, I mean, I'd like to see or pick on would be just a stronger connection between the, the town square and then the sunks. You know, you're basically the two big.
Yeah.
Civic areas establishing, I don't know, it, so, I don't want to say a thoroughfare, but just making those connections a little stronger. Outside of that, I mean, I love the main street alignment. I think that, I mean, drawing traffic, you know, from the roundabout down the axis here is, it's spot on. I don't have a lot to pick on, I'll be honest. I think this is a really great product here and, uh, I hope we're able to find a way to do it.
Thank you. Councilor Grant?
Yeah, I would also lean towards concept three mostly because it's the help, difference of housing, which is a few hundred, but this is a prime opportunity to put density here and I just don't really see it being as easy elsewhere.
Yeah, I agree with you. And that, I like three better. Um, but, but there's some, there's something to be said sometimes for, for a little bit more irregularity too, but, um, but, yeah, I mean, it, it just feels more orderly.
Well, we wouldn't have to say that unless somebody comes in with a six-story apartment building with a parking structure, we're not going to allow it to be developed at all, right? Because it can be flexible to say.
Yeah.
That's, more density is allowed on the edge right there on Robinson and 12th maybe, but it's not necessarily, it's going to stay a vacant field if nothing ever comes.
Yeah, and the thing to remember is that these are illustrations and they're not a develop, however it gets developed, it'll be, you, hopefully it's a template that you can use and, and, and it's, it's a useful tool, but, but I, although if somebody literally did it, I would be thrilled, but, uh, but not likely.
So my thought on, would be out of the two concepts, I don't know if council would prefer that if we take up the two concepts in CPTC and discuss them each and then recommend one that we want to put forward, or if you all want to decide right now, or whatever you prefer, I'm fine with, but, um, um, we can continue to discuss it.
I'll just say that several of us have been through this process for the past year or so. I think we've got a couple new council members that might not be up to speed on the variations and some of the ideas that we put forward.
Are you ready to sign on the long-term future?
I think, yeah, I'm taking it to CPTC, that's a great idea.
Okay. Is that? Councilor Nash?
Yeah, I think the, uh, the concepts are, are both pretty good and there's enough overlap in between the two that, uh, yeah, we still make meaningful progress towards, uh, seeing the development before finalizing a decision on which one. I think the most important detail that we might need to figure out ahead of time would be what, uh, the funding, financing limitations may be based on, uh, yes, if we're going to be looking at a TIF, what differences there might be based on, uh, layouts and whatnot. But, yeah, aside from that, I think you guys did a pretty good job.
Thank you.
So, um, the conversation with folks at the State Department of Mental Health on the subject of how this master plan could be advantageous to the State Department's desire to sell the property and, you know, they, they really do need a return on that initial investment to help them, uh, ultimately add capacity to behavioral health beds in central Oklahoma. The ability, Marty, based on, so if I'm just looking at option three, um, in terms of what could be a preliminary plat that could ultimately lead to, uh, final plat, parcels being established that could be sold off individually while the hospital operation still, you know, winding down or in a leased space, because right now it's just one big giant void on a map. And legal description, to sell by legal description is, it's, it's legal, um, it just doesn't give the buyer a whole lot of confidence in what they're buying. We're kind of now seeing opportunities where if with the state as the applicant and even how much of this work could be done, they retain ownership until pieces are ultimately sold off to those end users with, you know, the city's support and even, uh, the state being the applicant for that tax increment financing district, I think they're wide open to all of those possibilities if it leads them to a better return on, on all that property.
Yes, and, okay, so, and with LeMond School, that's part of this item. Recently, they've approached Daryl and me, maybe others, about, I think for a couple of years, I've been under the impression that they, well, they have been exploring, trying to find property somewhere else in Norman to, uh, move the school to a permanent location. And I think there's been some challenges finding another location and are now indicating that they're very interested in being a part of this master plan and the school staying on this property, either where it's at now or potentially building a new school that's part of this, uh, new neighborhood that we're building. So, um, um, I told them I did not have any, uh, problem at all with them wanting to stay there. If that's what they wanted to do, that's where the school started, so, um, I don't know if there was any comment that they had or that staff had about that on this item, but.
So during a master plan, the conversant would be a great time just to include the possibility of, um, a school site. And we know in other neighborhoods that have been developed, when, uh, the developers say, oh, by the way, we've got a, you know, 14-acre site for a future elementary, it's a selling point to the folks building there to recognize, think, you know, picture your ability for your, your kids to walk to school or right up the street. Now would be a great time to have such a conversation if that's council's desire.
Councilor Grant?
Uh, if we're moving in a TIF direction, I, I imagine there could be other places to find money, but, uh, usually like schools have to give up some, or you don't have to make the schools give up theirs, but if they're giving up the property tax and it's going towards building a new school, I could see that building on the agreements part where you would want to phase something like that in. And who knows, maybe it would go a lot faster than some of the other parcels that were outlined.
And this one is a little unique in that it's a private school that does not benefit from that, um, ed vorum.
Oh, it doesn't?
Tax stream. So it would be unique. Uh, it is currently, and I'm going to speak in all that land, just slap me in the back of the head if I'm wrong, uh, tax-exempt.
They're tax-exempt, it's a public school though. It's, uh, it's not a private school, so.
So.
People don't get ed vorum.
But they do not get ed vorum. So i- it, it would be a footprint that we would, um, adjust the calculation on possible tax increment created from this development, just to say, hey, you're probably not going to get any property taxes coming in from that particular postage stamp, wherever you put it on the map.
Councilor Pico?
I'll just say, I mean, this is going to come as no shock, but if it's, if we're going to build a school on this site, definitely don't want to see schools surrounded by massive parking lots.
An urban.
We want an urban-style school, very much like John Rex in Oklahoma City.
And we talked about that too.
Yeah. Make very efficient use of the site.
Yeah, and it could be a case where, um, you know, the corner that the school is currently in, that building is old. Um, that corner may be more valuable as far as generating TIF revenue as, in development. So maybe the school isn't on that corner, but it's still on the campus in that, in the neighborhood there somewhere. But a placeholder, a square footage placeholder for them, and, um, is something I'm, I'm definitely willing to support as part of this master plan. So any thoughts on LeMond being included in future plan?
I would think it's a good idea.
It's worth exploring.
Did you have anything you would like to add?
No, I would just, I just would add that, uh, thank you for even the consideration to be part of that. Um, we, we're growing, every, every year we grow, we're over 500 students. And so, um, this gives our, would give our families a peace of mind to be able to say, okay, now we have a, a true plan and that we're working with the city on that, so.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that? Okay. Well, then I think we'll proceed forward, uh, with the idea that LeMond School is going to stay in this area and wants to be part of the new Griffin neighborhood. I don't know what the name is yet, but Griffin Neighborhood. Any final comment or question from council on this item? All right, thank you all very much. And we'll, uh, we'll bring this up in CPTC, maybe in August or September, whichever one, but we'll start the, going over these two concepts and see what we can think of. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two is a discussion regarding the purchase of the Griffin Soccer Park, which is very exciting, so, I want the city staff here to, uh, talk about the details of that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Tim Kaufman, Budget Manager. Um, this is just to offer some additional information to item 29 tonight. Um, let me find that presentation. Okay. Uh, so again, this is item, uh, 29 tonight, the Griffin Soccer Park purchase. We just want to be very clear that this is not related to the item that was just discussed. The Griffin Soccer Park is north of Robinson Street. This also does not include Sutton Wilderness or Francis Kate Park. Francis Kate Park again is south of Robinson and then Sutton is north of the Griffin Soccer Park here, so just so that we're all on the same page here. This is a clip from the original 2016 Norman Forward Implementation Plan. Originally, there was going to be a $10 million purchase, or that was anticipated. 2014 legislation authorized Department, Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services to sell the property and that, that did include Sutton Wilderness and Francis Kate Park at that point. Again, that was in 2016. And then this is a clip from the updated implementation plan in 2022. In 2018, the city and Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services decided to actually enter into a long-term lease for Griffin Soccer Park and Sutton Wilderness and Francis Kate Park. So, why I apologize, Francis Kate Park was not included in that. But it was approved on November 27th, up to a 30-year period, $80,000 per year, and then everything paid at that point. If the city and Oklahoma Department of Mental Health Services decided to buy the land, everything paid up to that point would be applied to the purchase. At that point, the estimate was reduced from $10 million to $2.4 million. Again, that was in 2018. We started the $80,000 annual payments in FYE 20, and this is just a little status of Norman Forward Fund. So far through the end of the fiscal year just completed, we've paid $500,000 from that $2.4 million allocation for the Griffin Park lease. Looking at the Griffin Park remodel project, which is really for the Griffin Soccer Park, that project is now substantially complete and there's about $250,000 left over. And just to remind you, the Griffin Park remodel Soccer Park project had an estimated cost of 11 million originally, and they wound up appropriating just over 13 million for that. The project is complete and there are leftover funds. At this point, the Norman Forward Fund has a fund balance of just over 9.8 million. So there is a, a chunk there sitting in reserves. So take that in context with the remaining projects in the Norman Forward Plan, there are about five remaining projects, neighborhood parks, new neighborhood parks, new trail development, Canadian River Park and traffic improvements. So keep in mind, Norman Forward was a 15-year sales tax, it's going to be winding down in 2031, so we have about six years left. And these are the projects that are remaining and these are 2022 estimates for these projects, but at that point, there should be about 11 million left unless those estimates have changed in the last three years. So looking at specifically item 29, to purchase just the Griffin Soccer Park, it's going to cost $3,306,811. The biggest chunk of that will come from the Griffin Park lease allocation, the $2.4 million. Again, we've already paid 500,000 of that and that will apply to this purchase. So we need to appropriate the remaining 1.9 million in that allocation. We're going to take $220,000 from the savings in the Griffin Soccer Park remodel project and then we're going to take $686,811 from the capital fund from projects that are either complete or can be delayed for a year or two. And that, that brings us to the $3.3 million for this purchase. So if there are any questions or if you need any additional information, I'll try to answer.
Any questions, comments from council members? Councilor Peacock?
Just, we didn't have to necessarily cut anything to come up with the money.
No, sir. It's coming from the Griffin Park allocations mostly and then we are delaying some capital projects, but those can be refunded at some point in the future.
Thank you.
So Mr. Purinton participated in the Land Trust Board meeting last Friday where our request to acquire the soccer park was heard by the Board of Trustees and approved for sale. We, I'm sure Kim probably hates when we knock on her door, "Hey, Kim, guess what? We need you to put together about $3.3 million for us," and low and behold, this is what she does magically. So the opportunity to complete the acquisition, Mr. Purinton would take it through the, the close. We've got funds available that don't hit general fund reserves, we can hit the capital account and that Norman Forward set aside specifically for the long-term lease payments, but now you have the opportunity to put the pink slip in our books, which is just a monumental accomplishment, so really proud of staff.
Councilor Peacock?
Yeah, it's actually what I wanted to kind of drill down on. I think, I mean, I don't know how long we've been trying to acquire this land, but I know it's a number of years. And I, I guess my question was going to be, how much have we invested in the land, aside from lease payments, capital improvements, the soccer park, you know, maintenance on Sutton Wilderness? What's an estimate dollar amount that we've put into those properties?
I'll bet you we are pushing 20 million.
So.
It's my guess.
I think if we can secure it, protect our $20 million investment for another three, I think that's it. It's about as easy as they come.
I, I do want to mention, I think there's some heartburn from the, the, the name of that board.
C-Ford.
This, the Norman Board Oversight Board, I apologize, of upfronting that nine, 1.9 million that would have been paid over the next six years. And at the mayor's pleasure, I believe there's a representative here to discuss that, but since they have almost $10 million in reserves at this point and, you know, I think that's why I put this table together, that they're going to be needing about 11 million with, you know, old estimates. Keep that in mind to complete the plan. I think they're in a good position to, to do this at this point, but I believe that there's a representative on the committee that feels differently.
Yes, please.
I'm representative of the committee too. I, no, no, and actually I, I country, I'm also a member of prices here as well, so there's two of us here. I don't know that concerns would be the right word. I think that representing the Citizens Financial Oversight Board from Norman Forward, I think that there was strong consensus that absolutely in favor of acquiring this property for the reasons that Councilor Peacock mentioned just a moment ago. I think it's words of caution might be, might be what I would say, which is 2022, the price was 10.7 million. I think other projects have shown that there have been rising prices since 2022. And so I think the concern here from the Citizens Financial Oversight Board is we really want to, to meet what the expectations are for the people that voted for that, along with the fact that I believe sales tax over the last five to six months has not trended in the direction we would like it to. And so hopefully that turns the corner, but just words of caution that there are things that might be within your particular boards that may or may not be able to be accomplished. I think this is one that we need to move forward on. Don't mishear me and don't misunderstand Citizens Financial Oversight Board thoughts. And again, I am not representing full resolution from the board. Due to time reasons, we were not able to do that, but there was a consensus of opinion at the last meeting that we wanted to come and just issue those words of caution to the council to make sure that you were aware that those are things out there. Even I think on the spreadsheet, I do very much appreciate the spreadsheet, that's great. I don't even know that we had that information, so it's very helpful. Thank you very much. But I, I think that we know that we're, we're trending in a place that we're going to be probably seven figures short to meet all of the projects that, that we had talked about completing. Doesn't mean this is not a priority project, we need to do it, but once the decision was made to add the senior center project, that put us behind the curve significantly. Again, not another good comment about the senior center project, I think it's one of the most wonderful amenities we have within the city, but just a word of caution from the Citizens Financial Oversight Board, which we think is our responsibility to provide that education. Certainly you guys have the authority to move forward in whatever way you feel is possible at some point. And a final comment would be that the general fund would have to support. I think we've been very creative in what's been discussed today as far as potential other projects and finding money. Funds are out there, appreciate the city staff, we appreciate that, I believe, even as a board, but general fund is now the time, or is it later? Certainly, again, things to be considering as we talk about what those projects are.
Thank you very much. Okay. I think those are really good points to take into consideration in our, you know, our ability to complete the voter-approved projects that everybody expects. We have five years from October 10th or 15th until the tax expires if we don't renew it in the next five years. And so my thoughts on that would be that I definitely do appreciate the caution. I'm not sure that we might have another opportunity to purchase the property and it is for a lot less than what we were originally anticipating having to pay for it potentially. So I think we definitely, this council, future councils need to really think about the budget going forward and finishing everything, but we might only have this one shot to get this property right now, so I think that's what we do need to do, but I do really appreciate the, the committee for taking a look at that and, and.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, again, we would concur, it's the time to buy the property, it's just a matter of caution as of before and potentially the funding of how you purchase it.
Absolutely. Any comments or questions about that discussion or moving forward? Councilor Peacock?
If there was a Norman Forward 2, could you roll in these five or whatever's left remaining projects into the next bond or do they have to be satisfied in this bond because of language?
I would view, this may, I may be incorrect, but I would view Norman Forward, I mean, we would just be extending the tax for another 15 years potentially, if that's what we decided. So I would think that extending the tax would include covering the cost of any of the existing projects that aren't finished.
And, and, yeah, Councilor Peacock, I think by the time we get closer to the end of that five-year period, I know Mr. Olson and his team in that long-term capital plan have programs established to advance each of these. And what we have learned to this point in the Norman Forward experience is our ability to take advantage of opportunities that present themselves. Nobody thought we wouldn't be able to acquire the Griffin land initially, so we sign a lease. Well, that freed up the cash to actually build the Adult Wellness and Education Center. We, sometimes you get lucky, but we do get lucky with our eyes wide open. We are always looking for those opportunities to enhance and improve and we do recognize what we completed winds up being bigger, better, cooler than what was originally envisioned going through the process, meeting with our community support groups for each one of those big giant projects. And some of them have provided opportunities for future expansion, like a 50-meter pool at the Young Family Athletic Center, still on the table, value engineered with the support of our community members to say, here's what we can build now and this covers the lion share of the competition. So I, I, I absolutely appreciate the concerns, which is exactly what that committee is supposed to do, is make sure we don't lose sight of those possibilities with a balance, interest earnings, and I'll wink at my banker buddy to say, you know, if we could get some better returns on that investment, that would really help us out. But we will be collecting and adding to the pot for the next five years and we'll be advancing, you'll see bits and pieces of each one of those projects come forth for RFPs, for design services and everything else. So it will be a race right to that finish line. We definitely hope to have that next question prepared for your consideration long before we get there.
I'll also point out too that with neighborhood parks and new neighborhood parks or existing neighborhood parks is referring, along with trail development, they're not necessarily that, those funds aren't necessarily designed or assigned to a specific project, so there is a little fluctuation in that. So for instance, neighborhood parks, it would be, I would assume that there would be some money set aside in Norman Forward 2 with that, so I think it would be easy to connect that and maybe not do a playground or two towards the end of 2030 or 2031 as we get in there and that could be picked up if there is a, those playgrounds could be picked up with a future Norman Forward, because those aren't assigned to a specific project.
I believe, I believe also, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, some of the Sutton Wilderness is not included in that spreadsheet.
Correct.
A few things also that are not even a million dollars different here, those things that were also part of this particular line item are not included, but Senator Powell, I, I, excuse me, I do, I do totally agree with you. Hopefully those bankers out there will get better returns. But the fund requires.
Okay, any final comments, question from council about this item before it's on the agenda tonight? Okay. All right, any final anything from anybody on council before we adjourn this part? Okay, well, thank you all very much for being here. Thank you for the update on everything and I look forward to continuing on down the road with this stuff.
My editor was just preparing, so construction, I think.